In the name of the State of Maine, you are required to notify and warn the voters of the town of Woolwich in Sud County, qualified to vote by law, qualified by law to vote in the town of Paris, to meet at the Woolwich Central School on 137 Nacocet Road in Sud Town. On the seventeenth day of May, 2023, at six in the evening, then and there to act on Article 1 through 45, all said articles be being sent out to it. Article 1, to elect a moderator to preside the said meeting and to vote by written ballot.
I nominate John Chapman.
Sign us. John Chapman is our moderator. It's unanimous. It's John Chapman. Okay. I state your name.
Hi, John D. Chapman.
Do you swear and affirm?
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
I didn't hear.
So long.
So long as I shall be a citizen thereof, so help me God.
Perfect. I swear that I will.
I swear that I will affirm that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities the duties incumbent on me as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution's laws of the state, so help me God.
All I need is your signature, John.
First thing I'd like to do. Testing, one, two. All right, testing. Please rise and join me in the bled of the flag. Perfect. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a few announcements before we get started. First, I'd like to recognize Representative Allison Hattler for the Legislative Senate.
I say, Al, Senator Vitale, you're welcome to join me. It gives me great pleasure to recognize that, um, we can just do this right here. So, um, if you've looked at the town report, you know that we have dedicated this year's town report to Jeri Edgerly, a longtime resident here. And we also, and so you'll see some pictures and some verbs, verbiage on this. And we also, in honor of her 100th birthday last November, we, uh, the legislature put in a sentiment, which I'm. Do you want to? Are we reading? Okay, all right. All right. Um, with State of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing Geraldine Edgerly of Woolwich, who is celebrating her 100th birthday, November 11th, 2022. We extend our congratulations and best wishes and give order that this official sent expression of sentiment be sent forth with on behalf of the 130th legislature and the people of State of Maine. And it's signed by the former Speaker of the House, Ryan Cacto, President of the Senate, Secretary of the Senate, Clerk of the House, and introduced by myself and co-sponsored by Senator Vitale. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Take your look. You understand you have an announcement or two?
I bet I can do it from here without a mic. A reminder that the town has an annual Memorial Day service. This year, it's the 120th. It will be held on Monday, May 29th, at 7:00 at the Days Ferry Congregational Church. It rotates between the churches in Woolwich. So, Monday, Memorial Day at 7:00. Also, the ailed lives are running. If you haven't ever seen it, come down to the ailed lives and over to the dam. You should go within the next week for a really, really good experience of seeing them up the ladder. And recycling reminder, it falls on Memorial Day, so it'll be the day after this time. So, Tuesday, about 30. And if the meeting runs late and you're bored, the Historical Society table has good reading material.
Okay. Now, Allison Hattler and Jason Shaw have announced another chair.
All right. Good evening, folks. We're here to do the annual Woolwich Spirit of America Award. And I think I will start. And this year's chosen person, if you will, is Dale Reno. And is he here yet? So Dale, we're going to go ahead and read this. We've written some things here. Some of it.
I feel it's true.
Yeah. So we'll start off. So whereas maintaining our municipal buildings as town assets is important and.
Whereas Dale Reno has continually stepped up to respond to a variety of municipal needs and.
Whereas Dale donated his labor to re-site and repaint the old town meeting house and also responded to an emergency mold situation in the town office's utility room and.
Whereas our community can count on Dale to volunteer his manpower and equipment to install overhead banners celebrating and announcing community events and.
Um, this one, if you know Dale and you're friends on Facebook, whereas Dale has been Facebook's early morning weather forecaster. I don't know if you noticed this. Everything's out there, the conditions. Therefore.
Be resolved that the town of Woolwich confers the 2023 Spirit of America Award on Dale Reno on this date, the 17th of May, 2023. And it's signed by all of us.
All right, folks. Just have a few quick announcements. Um, first of all, June 13th will be the RSU budget vote at the town office. Polling hours will be from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. absentee ballots are available now. Uh, one week from tonight, May 24th. Last year's town meeting, you folks had asked, you know, we're going through the revote process. We've selected a firm. Uh, good news, it's, we don't have to raise and appropriate more money this year for that. But you folks wanted an informational meeting, maybe ask questions, meet and greet. Uh, so one week from tonight at 4:30 at the town office, informational meeting with Dirigo Assessing Group to discuss any questions, concerns you might have. Um, the trees. There's been some tree removal at the town office. Many folks have asked some questions. It's not for solo farms. It's not. What it is, is if you've been involved in the whole George Wright Road and the process of select board, the road permission the town's been working on, um, the DOT will be constructing a new section of road. Not this year, maybe not next year, but connecting George Wright to Nacocet, it will be going through the town's existing septic system. The town is going to put a replacement septic system, sort of where the trees have been kept. Uh, the trees up top needed to be taken out. They were a hazard. They're full of brown-tailed moth. There's all kinds of other issues. Um, so far, all of this has been done with no cost to the town. It's taxpayer money, but it's been through grant funding. And it looks like all of the work down there will be funded without direct cost to the town at all. Um, so stay tuned. And I think the folks that are here in the fall for the meetings, the light, the DOT, all that stuff, I think you're aware of some of that. Um, and then the other thing I have is the town office will be closed on Monday and Tuesday, July 3rd and 4th this year. And that's it.
I just kind of want to reiterate on the RSU vote that Allison was so surprised it was going to be held at the school.
Right, okay.
This is the only thing that we vote on is the RSU. There is no state, there is no local. And, um, we don't unfortunately have a huge turnout.
Do you folks hear that okay?
It's easier for us to have it at the town, so we do not have.
Right, just to make sure. The vote is here. Is that the town office not here? The only vote we're voting on is the RSU. So just make sure you make note of that. All set?
Okay, I think that's the rest of the announcements. The rules of procedure for this meeting will be those set forth in the main moderator's manual. Without objection, a main motion may be reconsidered not later than after the next more article is voted. I will do my best to moderate this meeting fairly and effectively. I ask that no one speak before he or she is recognized by me. I want only one conversation going on at a time. And please stand when you speak so all may see who is speaking and better hear what is being said. Speak very loudly or use one of the microphones. It's one in the center. And we also have two runners. Where are they? Way in the back, stand up. Cole Beaton and Willa Lukeyes. So thank you, you two. They will run a microphone to whoever. Just indicate and they'll come running. If I don't recognize you by name, please state your name when you speak. Woolwich residents only are entitled to speak and to vote. Non-residents who wish to speak must first gain permission from the town. And without objection, however, our out-of-town staff may speak if called upon for clarification. I will do my best to give everyone who wishes to speak the opportunity to do so. And I will recognize you in the order that I see your indicated desire to speak. I request that everyone respect the rights of others to have opinions contrary to your own. And I request you to conduct yourselves in good order and decor. I will tolerate no abusive or disrespectful language. Practice patience and good humor. Speak to the subject matter of the article before the town and not to the person. Do not question the motives or speak ill of another. Wherever possible, I would like an affirmative motion on the article so that all will better understand what is being said and understand when the vote question is put to a vote. I am going to bundle some of the articles together to be voted on as a group by a single vote. Anyone wishing to set aside one of the bundled articles for a separate vote may do so by requesting me to have that article set aside. With that, let's get into the order. Article. I'm going to bundle the first three articles, Article 2, 2, 4. Article 2, to see if the town will set the dates of October 30, 2023, and April 30, 2024, when taxes are due and paid, and to see if the town will fix the interest rate on unpaid taxes at 8% per annum. 36, made revised statutes annotated, Section 505.4. And to set the dates that interest starts on unpaid taxes 30 days after each due date. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to set an interest rate to be paid by the town on taxes that have been paid but are either abated or overpaid and refunded at 4% for the 23, 2023, 2024 tax year, 36 MRSA Section 506-A. And Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer all unextended balances and overdrafts to the undesignated fund balance, except those that may be carried forward at the select board's discretion. The select board will authorize to expend funds out of these carried-forward accounts for the purpose for which they were established or allow them to elapse. I have a motion on the screen.
Motion that we accept Articles 2, 3, and 4 as read? I second the motion.
Moved and seconded to accept Articles 2, 3, and 4. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Articles 2, 3, and 4 are adopted. Article 5A, to see what sum the town will vote to appropriate from undesignated fund balance account to reduce the tax commitment. The Board of Selectment recommends up to $1,500,000, which is the amount that was recommended and voted last year.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article 5A as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, no. Article 5A is adopted. I'm going to put together the 5B, C, and D. Article 5B, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506. Article 5C, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $20,000 from the undesignated fund balance account to pay for abatements and applicable interest granted during this fiscal year. 2022 appropriation was $20,000. Article 5D, to grant the select board the permission to remove up to $50,000 from the undesignated fund balance in the event of a state or federal-declared emergency or disaster.
Move the Articles B, C, and D to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded that Articles 5B, C, and D be accepted as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Articles 5C, B, C, and D are accepted. Put together the next two articles. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectment to apply for available grants to receive said grants and to expend the grants' funds for the purposes stated in the grant, and to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $40,000 from the undesignated fund balance account as the town shared in the approved grants. Article 7A, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to sell or disclose of various items that serve little or no purpose in the operation of the town. And Article 7B, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to accept donations, fines, fees established by ordinance, and revenues generated by town-provided services, and to use them as directed by the donation ordinance or contract or otherwise at the selectmen's discretion.
Move the Articles 6 and 7 to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Move the Articles 6 and 7 to be accepted. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Articles 6, 7, and 8 are accepted. Article 8, to select a fish commissioner for a five-year term.
I nominate Pat Henning. I second that.
Pat Henning, Patrice Henning has been nominated for the 2023-2028 term. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And Henning has been elected. Article 9A, to see what action the town will take in regard to the ailed lives privileges at Nacocet and Back River Creek for the coming year.
I make the motion that we leave that up to the fish commissioners. I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded in Article 9A to leave the matter of how the ailed lives privileges are handled up to the fish commissioners. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Article 9A is adopted. I'm going to put together 9A, 9C, and 10. 9B, to see if the town will authorize the fish commissioners on behalf of the town to use funds from the yearly sale of ailed lives privileges collected in the fishway account for the maintenance purposes of the fishway building and property. The fish commissioners are responsible for maintenance decisions. As the fishway property is shared with the Bath Water District, the fish commissioners will coordinate with them on matters related to ailed lives privileges. When expenditure is expected to be greater than $1,000, a planned fishway maintenance project will be presented to the select board for their agreement. Use of fishway funds for purposes other than fishway purposes will be subject to a vote of the town. 9C, to see if the town will authorize the transfer of funds presently in the fishway account to the municipal property reserve account, The select board and the fish commissioners had agreed to an immediate, one-time transfer of $30,000. This transfer is in lieu of recent yearly use of fishway funds for maintenance of historic town-owned properties and will facilitate town budget planning. Officially, a town has sufficient remaining funds for known immediate needs and will be replenished over time from yearly ailed lives credits. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to sell or dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for nonpayment of taxes on such terms as they deem advisable, and to authorize them or the treasurer to execute litany deeds and transfer tax documents all the same. And to also authorize the selectmen to use the funds from the sale of said real estate for any municipal purpose as they deem appropriate. Note, the municipal officers shall use the special sale process required by 36 MRSA Section 943-C for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owners.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded. Articles 9B, C, and 10 be accepted as read. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Eric, is that better? Yeah, I don't object anyway. Just a question on that. Is there some way to determine a dedicated amount or minimum amount that is maintained in that budget?
Mr. King.
Are you talking the fishway budget?
I'm sorry, yes. In terms of, I guess it would be Article 9C. Is there a minimum that's designated to maintain that balance?
Yes, they have, uh, they have a balance of $59,000 in that account now after the, and we're going to take 30 of it. And that will leave plenty. The buildings are totally, uh, fully insured. So if anything happens down there, we just, we just repaired the valve for the, for the dam and we put in a new pipe to run the water from the dam down last year or the year before. So everything's in good shape. And we just couldn't see any purpose of leaving $70,000 or $80,000 sitting there doing nothing when we could put it in our building reserve fund and use it for all the municipal properties.
Okay, so there is an awareness that a minimum that's needed to maintain that property.
They, uh, they take in about $10,000 or $12,000 a year of the sales of fish, so it won't take them long to replenish it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, then, of Articles 9B, 9C, and 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Those articles are adopted. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $751,198.88, established for the town of Woolwich by state law. In the event that the municipal budget approved under the following articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. Now, this article is needed because LD1 tax reform legislation does not take into account the town's use of surplus to reduce taxes when processing the commitment of taxes and the appropriations approved during this town meeting will exceed the tax levy cap.
Move Article 11 to be accepted and read. Second it?
Move Article 11 to be accepted as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Article 11 is adopted. Article 12, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $45,156 for compensation of the town clerk, deputy treasurer, deputy tax collector, and who authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to $45,156. The 2022 appropriation is $42,600.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded. Moved and seconded to accept Article 12 as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Article 12 is adopted. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $70,380 for the compensation of the town administrator, town treasurer, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to $70,380. 22 appropriation was $64,000.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article 13 as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,156 for the compensation of the tax collector, deputy town clerk, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to $45,156. 2022 appropriation is $42,600.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article 14 as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Article 14 is adopted. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $26,000 for the employee health insurance account. 2022 appropriation was $28,000.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 15 as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Article 15 is adopted. Article 16A, to see what sum of money the town will vote to pay the town officers for the ensuing year.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Longley.
William.
William Lowey Jr., I'd like to make a motion that we dispense with the balance of the reading of that line item. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to dispense with further reading of the balance of Article sixteen A. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Move the accepted article sixteen A is presented.
Moved and seconded to accept Article sixteen A is presented. Any discussion? Yes, over the.
I'm just curious about.
Please rise and identify your.
Randy Howell.
Yep.
So I'm curious about the comp and vacation time.
Runner? The microphone.
I'm curious about the line item on comp and vacation time.
Which item is that, Doc?
On the E L V, what is comp really?
Second from the last.
Okay, what that is, is for every forty hours work, is that the correct number? Forty, every forty hours work, we have to give one hour of vacation time. One hour, not vacation time, but time off for paid, paid leave for any purpose at all. So we have to fund that, and it's kind of difficult to come up with a number because it applies to, it doesn't apply to the select people, but it applies to everybody else in town that is a employee in the town.
Okay, I'm just curious how it would go up seven times.
Excuse me?
I'm curious of how it would go up seven times. I'm not disputing your decision, I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, Randy, we have been talking about it before.
We did actually fund it in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
We put ten thousand in it, and we never used it. So we did not use it last year, so we didn't fund it. But this year, we put six thousand.
Did you hear that, Doc?
Yeah, everybody hear that okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other question? Discussion?
I hope that we accept Article sixteen as presented.
It's moved and seconded to accept Article sixteen A as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article sixteen A is adopted. Article sixteen B, to see what sum within the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the town officers account for the ensuing year. That's raising and appropriating the amount you just approved in the first.
Article sixteen D to be accepted. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article sixteen D. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article sixteen D is adopted. Article sixteen C, to see if the town will vote to up to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand four hundred eighty dollars for the salary including mileage to the animal control officer, ACO, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to eight thousand four hundred eighty dollars. The twenty-two appropriation was eight thousand dollars.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article sixteen C as read. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article sixteen A C is adopted. Article sixteen D, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-one thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars for the salary of the codes enforcement officer, building inspector, and licensed plumbing inspector, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to thirty-one thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars. Twenty-two appropriation was thirty thousand forty dollars.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article sixteen D as read. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article sixteen D is adopted. Article sixteen E, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars for the salary of the backup CEO officer, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to three thousand dollars. The twenty-two appropriation was three thousand dollars.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded?
Moved and seconded to accept Article sixteen E as read. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article sixteen E is adopted. Article sixteen F, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars for temporary help in training replacement personnel, and to authorize the select people to spend any amount up to three thousand dollars. Twenty-two, twenty-two appropriation was three thousand dollars.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded?
Moved and seconded to accept sixteen F as read. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article sixteen F is adopted. Article seventeen A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate such sums as money as may be necessary for the following town accounts.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Longley.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the balance of the reading of each line item. Seconded the motion?
It's moved and seconded to spend further reading of this article. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Accept the article seventeen as presented. Seconded the motion?
Then moved and seconded to accept Article seventeen A as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article seventeen A is adopted. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-three thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars to support the operating costs of the patent-free library, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to sixty-three thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars. Twenty-two appropriation was sixty thousand three hundred three dollars.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article eighteen as read. Any discussion? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Few questions if I may. I know this comes up every year, it seems, but I'm curious, how many in the room are permanent, are currently cardholders for the library? You raise your hand. You're all cardholders, okay. How many of you use your card at least once a month? About once a week? About once a day? Just out of curiosity, I want some numbers to go on record to show the usage of the cards, and the percentage currently here, representing the numbers that just raised their hands, is less than five percent of the town. So you're talking of voting members of the town of about twenty-five hundred, you're talking quite a few number do not use the card on a routine basis. So I'm curious that we might consider this something of a donation that might be moved to Article forty-two rather than have its own article. Just a recommendation.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eighteen as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The opinion of our chair, the ayes have it. Article eighteen is adopted. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars for the town operations account.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Longley.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the balance of the reading of each line item. Seconded the motion?
Thank you. And moved and seconded to suspend, suspend reading of the further of balance of this article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
I hope that we accept Article eighteen as presented. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article nineteen as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting Article nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article nineteen is adopted. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars for the municipal building operation plant account. The approximate breakdown of the account is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Longley.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the balance of each line item. Seconded the motion?
Then moved and seconded to spend with further reading of the items in this account. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
I hope that we accept Article twenty as presented. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article twenty as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article twenty is adopted. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eleven thousand five hundred dollars for the town's insurance. Note, Article twenty-one includes all municipal buildings and contents of tax-acquired properties. Vehicle insurance is now listed under the appropriate departments, fire and EMS. Twenty-two appropriation was twelve thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article twenty more or less read. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article twenty-one is adopted. I'm going to put articles twenty-two through twenty-eight together. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to sign a one-year contract with an assessing agent for the purpose of assessing and maintaining the equity of the property assessments. Further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand six hundred dollars as payment to the assessing agent. The twenty-two appropriation was forty-two thousand dollars. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five hundred dollars to update the property tax maps. Twenty-two appropriation was the same, twenty-five hundred. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five hundred dollars for the computer replacement account. Twenty-two appropriation was twenty-five hundred dollars. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars for the payment of membership dues for the main municipal association. Twenty-two appropriation was four thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand eight hundred dollars to pay the auditor. The twenty-two appropriation was ten thousand two hundred dollars. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars for the town's litigation account. The twenty-two appropriation was seven thousand dollars. And Article twenty-eight, to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars and put into a reserve account for the purchase of solar panels at the end of seven years from Revision Energy Green Volt LLC with a purchase price of forty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars. The twenty-two amount was seven thousand dollars.
Move the articles to be accepted as read. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded the articles twenty-eight, eight through, twenty-two through twenty-eight, the accepted as read. Any discussion on these articles? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting these articles say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Those articles are accepted, are adopted. Article twenty-nine, to authorize the select board, one, to participate with Consolidated Communications in applying to the main connectivity authority for a grant to fund construction of fiber optic broadband internet service that would be available to every household in village. Two, to pledge up to two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars as matching funds for the grant to be paid out over two years. Three, to enter into any agreements with Consolidated Communications necessary to make the application and contention on receipt of the grant to complete the project. And four, to appropriate one hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the undesignated fund balance if the grant is awarded for the payment of the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four matching funds.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article twenty-nine as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article twenty-nine is adopted. I'm going to put Article thirty through thirty-two together. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand dollars for the continued sampling of groundwater from the installed surface water test sites at the landfill. The twenty-two appropriation was eighty-one hundred dollars. Article thirty-one A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars twenty-one cents for complete weekly curbside refuse collection and disposal, bi-weekly curbside recycling collection and disposal, and to authorize the select people to enter into agreement with riverside disposal and equal name for their services. The twenty-two appropriation was two hundred forty thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars forty-four cents. The breakdown of the total cost is as follows. Weekly curbside collection trash, one hundred one thousand three hundred eighty-two sixteen cents. Bi-weekly curbside collection recycling, thirty-four thousand four hundred sixty-seven five cents. Disposal tipping fee based on the estimated twelve hundred twenty tons, one hundred two thousand five hundred dollars. Tipping fee for recyclables estimated two hundred twenty-seven tons, seven thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars for a total of two hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight twenty-one cents. Thirty-one B, to see if the town will appropriate the sum not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance account for the selector to use if necessary for unanticipated solid waste disposal recycling costs. Thirty-one C, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand dollars for the household hazardous waste collection event. Note, each year, the city of Bath, along with area towns, sponsors the household hazardous waste collection event. Citizens sign up to dispose of such items such as oil-based paints, fuels, solvents, insecticides, et cetera. Date of the household hazardous waste collection event, I guess it was May sixth, two thousand twenty-three. And Article twenty, thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand dollars for the maintenance and upkeep of the Nagrosset Park accounts. Note, the Nagrosset Park mini-budget request is now included in this article. Twenty-two appropriation was four thousand dollars.
Move the articles to be accepted as read. Seconded the motion?
Moved and seconded, the articles thirty, eight through thirty-two, be accepted as read. Any discussion on these articles? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. A question regarding item thirty, Article thirty. Is there something significant that occurred with the sampling procedure that there's a fifty percent increase in the cost?
Mr. King?
Every year, the state requires us to test for more chemicals and stuff. This is in the old dump, and we test fuel wells than we used to, but we, it costs a lot more to have them tested now because of the sampling costs. Everything has to be sent out of state or to state labs and out of state labs both be sampled. And now we're checking for the P5s, you know, for chemical poisoning. It gets more costly all the time.
That's negative at this much house. Any other discussion upon any of the articles? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting Article thirty through thirty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Those articles are adopted. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate such sums of money as be necessary for the following accounts.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Longley.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the reading of each line item. Seconded that motion?
Then moved and seconded to suspend the further reading of these articles of Article thirty-three. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion?
Accept the article thirty-three as presented. I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-three as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-three is adopted. I'll put thirty-four and thirty-five together. Article thirty-four A, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to remove up to sixty-two thousand dollars if available from the local loan assistance program, L R A P account, for hot-topping town roads. Thirty-four B, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to spend any additional L R A P funds for whatever highway purpose the selectmen and the road commissioners deem appropriate.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Thirty-five. And thirty-five, to see if the. In thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars for the repair and maintenance on unpaid maintained roads. The twenty twenty-two appropriation was twenty thousand dollars.
Moved both articles to be accepted as read. I second that.
Moved and seconded Article thirty-four, thirty-five as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Article thirty-four, page B, and thirty-five are adopted. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to approve the select board's order of discontinuance of a portion of George Wright Road stated dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and filed with the town clerk.
Moved the article to be accepted as read. I second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-six as read. Any discussion?
Does that mean?
Yes.
Director?
Where would the discontinuation occur? My first question.
It's downtown where the, where the box COVID is now. That's all going to be taken out. We are going to maintain a public easement over the road, but the road's going to be eight feet underwater.
So there won't be any households that are currently serviced by the town that would be discontinued, is that correct?
No. We're going to move the, eventually, we're going to move the hand-carry boat launching ramp from the side of the, where it is now, over to the, the west, the east side of the, and there will be parking area there and everything for people to use that. It will still be the recreation area, it's just coming down the other side of the bottom.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, in the, a random that was in the documentation, it talked about households could form a road association. And so that led me to believe that perhaps that was being discontinued further up George Wright Road.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is a maintenance discontinuance. The, there'll still be a public easement right away down there. It's going to end. If you read all that, it talks about the, the excavated opening when it happens, the top of the riprap slope. So it's, it's a little hard to describe. But none of the homes are affected by access. That language is the language the attorney has there, the town has. We had the public here, we had the folks that own the properties come, or at least with more properties. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-six as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article thirty-six is adopted. Article thirty-seven A, to see if the town will vote to, will raise and appropriate and or appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary for the following accounts. Appropriate six hundred dollars from the Writwold Emergency Management Agency, W E M A, account, and raise and appropriate sixty-one thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars through taxation. Hydrants, that. Twelve hydrants of two thousand two hundred thirty-two for twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars. In twenty twenty-two was nineteen thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars. And Wiscasset, thirteen hydrants of two thousand five hundred eighty dollars for thirty-three thousand five hundred forty dollars. Twenty twenty-two was thirty-three thousand five hundred twenty dollars, the same. The W E M A director, six hundred dollars. Generator maintenance account, one thousand dollars. Zero was raised in twenty twenty-two. The total sixty-one thousand nine hundred forty, twenty-four dollars. Note, the stipend to be paid for the W E M A director is, is with no due tax, no new tax dollars.
Moved the article to be accepted as read. Second motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-seven as read. Any discussion? Thirty-seven A is read. All those in favor of accepting thirty-seven A, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article thirty-seven A is adopted. Article thirty-eight A, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars for the fire department account. The breakdown of the account is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Kowal.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the balances of reading of each line item. I second the motion.
Moved and seconded to dispense with further reading of this, these line items. Any discussion? All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Moved the article thirty-eight A, the accepted, is presented. I second that.
Motion to accept Article thirty-eight A as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article thirty-eight A is adopted. Article thirty-eight B, to see if the town will vote to one, raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand four hundred dollars for the interest payments on the fifth year for the fire truck. Two, to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars for principal payments for the fifth year for the fire truck.
Moved the article to be accepted as read. Second motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-eight B as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article thirty-eight B is adopted. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars for the catastrophic repair account.
Moved the article to be accepted as read. Second?
Moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-nine as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article thirty-nine is adopted. Article forty includes two articles, forty A and forty B. There's two options, only one of which will be adopted. And, but we will discuss them together. I will read the motion for both of these, to discuss these articles together. Article forty, to see what action the town will take in regards to EMS service. Forty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred sixty thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars for the emergency medical service department. Breakdown of this account is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kowal.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with each line item reading. Second the motion?
It's moved and seconded to dispense with further reading of the line items in thirty, forty-eight. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And Article forty D, I will read the note. There is a potential to bring in ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars in revenue, which will be offset, used to offset the cost of the service under forty A. Article forty B, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty, three hundred sixteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars to contract with that EMS. The breakdown is as follows. Three hundred twenty calls at four hundred eighty-five per call, one hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars. Twenty-five percent uncollectibles at eight hundred sixty dollars each, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Calls requiring two ambulants estimated at ten percent, fifteen thousand five hundred twenty dollars. Maintain forward response responders, seventy-seven thousand six hundred dollars for total three hundred sixteen, three hundred twenty dollars.
Moved the articles to be accepted as read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded that these articles be accepted as read. Presented. Discussion?
Yes. I would love it.
Mr. Kowal, I would like Phil King to make a discussion of recognition. Do you make a case?
I think that an awful lot of people ask why we have two, two budgets, two proposals here. And I just wanted to take, and quite frankly, we've taken a lot of heat on the social media because of it. But I just wanted to explain why we have two here. Two weeks before the original date of this meeting, which was April twenty-sixth, when we were originally going to have this meeting, two weeks before, we had to send stuff off to the printers, to print stuff for this meeting. We still didn't have a, any EMS budget. A couple of weeks later, we did get an EMS, we got, we got a paper, the budget offer, offer given to us. It was a two-page thing, I have a copy of it right here. And it was just, all it had on it was just wages. No, no F I C A added in, no comp insurance or any of that. And the, the first, we were given three options. The first option was two hundred and forty-five thousand eight, two hundred eighty dollars. And that did not include any shop supplies, diesel fuel for the trucks, maintenance for the trucks, or anything else. By the time we added in F I C A and comp, that came up to three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Okay? Option two was four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, four, four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred eighty dollars, which, when we added in F I C A and comp, came to five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, five hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. Option three was for three hundred and forty-three thousand four forty, which, by the time we added that in, came to five hundred and seven thousand two hundred and forty-eight. And at the time, we thought we couldn't afford any of those options. And that's why I reached out to the city of Bath and had them give us an alternative. Our newly-elected select person, Tom Davis, worked for weeks with Brian Carlton and Sean Merrill, and they finally whittled the budget down to what we were presenting. We were given that budget to vote on on the night of April twenty-sixth, which was the date of this meeting was originally going to be held. We got the budget about an hour and a half before we had to vote on it and send it off to the printers. So I just wanted to explain that that's why we did what we did. I, I have to say that the, the people that have been serving us on the EMS service have done an excellent, excellent job. And this is not in any reflection on anything that they did or anything. It's just, we were in sticker shock when we got these prices. And that's why we reached out.
Mr. Kowal? What would be the advantages of going with that? The advantages of going with that? Mr. King? What would be the advantages of going with that? Mr. King?
In my own personal opinion, there are some advantages to going with that. Again, the, the people that have been serving us for the last, since two thousand nineteen have done a great job. We started out with twenty-four people. We're down now to averaging between eight and ten people on the service. We, we, I, I think the best thing to do is to let somebody from EMS service describe what they want to do, how, how the service is going to change first. And then we'll come back to this, Ted, if that's all right. Brian Carlton will step up here. He's going to, Brian Carlton?
I just want to correct that we have twelve current staff on our roster, if not the eight to ten. And that's just our EMS providers. That doesn't include drivers. So right now, if we're unable to put two EMS providers on the truck, we'll have one provider and a driver. And that's how we're staffing our shifts right now. The increase to payroll and the option that we put forth, the timeline that Mr. King has provided is shady. It's kind of gray area. We provided the final budget on the Monday. It wasn't voted on until Wednesday, so, and I would have to, off on that. So our operational plan, I don't know if anyone saw a lengthy Facebook post overnight. We're restricted right now to who we can hire as staff because we function completely on-call. So I'm not going to hire someone to be on-call and pay them four dollars an hour right now to cover an evening shift if they live more than ten minutes out of town. That's a disservice to every single member of this town for you to wait for an ambulance that long. And so what we're looking to do specifically to the daytime, we can cover the evenings with the people on-call that already live in Woolwich just fine. It's the daytime and it's keeping those people, it's not only keeping our own people that live in Woolwich, in Woolwich, to cover our shifts, but it's to expand our hiring pool of providers so that we can increase that. So what the plan is, it will put, so there's fourteen day shifts, seven days, two people. It'll have five of those at, five of those day shifts will be at what we call per DM rate, so they will be paid to be in the station for their shift. And then the other nine of the day shifts will be at a non-call rate. That's where the daytime evening will go up. So that is the main reason for the significant, not significant, fifty-three thousand dollars. And to increase the rates, if anyone grabbed the handouts out, like I alluded to, so, before you, two, so who's my on-duty career right now? Kevin and Doug, okay. So they're getting paid four dollars and sixty bucks to be available right now. And I just think that's too low for the service that they're doing, the sacrifices that get made. You have to schedule, you have to kind of time out your meals with family and spouses. There's a lot of sacrifices that go into it in four sixteen an hour, in my opinion, for a day shift, excuse me, during the week, evening shift is just too low. So there's an increase to the call rates for when people are actually responding. That's to keep our people in town and not picking up shifts of another service, Wiscasset or Waldenburgh or Booth Bay, services north of us that operate in a non-fire-based manner, which is similar to how we quasi-operate. And then an increase to the on-call rates. So instead of getting four dollars an hour, it goes up to nine fifty. Admittedly, it is not what I was hoping for. I was, I was hoping for a little bit higher for our, for our volunteers, but some cuts to the budget were made. But I think, I think overall, our community, the residents, have truly supported us over the last four years. We've really succeeded in everything that we've done and we've taken on extra tasks. Four years ago, when I stood here and talked about doing things on our own, there was a lot of question whether or not we could do it. We've proven that. If you go to, if anyone wants to have a laugh, grab your town warrant from four years ago. Every budget number in that warrant was budgeted on two hundred and forty calls. We're pushing three hundred and sixty this year. We're over three hundred and twenty right now. So our call volume has increased. And any other service, the call volume is increasing. We provided a, for about three hundred and eighty vaccine, COVID nineteen vaccines to public safety personnel when the vaccines started coming out. It was us and Topson for the, anyone in Saguaro County. So police officers, dispatchers, firefighters, Z N Ts. They either went to Topson or they came to Woolwich. So our staff really stepped up to provide that. And one big piece about having, continuing to have our own service, in my opinion, we do have a population that is
Go ahead.
Improving and gaining wisdom and experience.
Well done.
Thank you. But by having this type of service that we have, a community-based service, means that you can age in place. And I know that's a big topic in communities. That means that instead of getting a large bill from an outside entity because you fell down and you need help getting up into your bed or something like that, our community service understands that. And that's why our, our non-transport billing fees don't kick in until the third call in a six-month period, really generous in that, in my opinion, in that sense. And that really allows people to stay home. Admittedly, I will be honest on this, maybe sometimes a little bit too long, but we're main, we're small town, we're stubborn. I understand that. If anyone knew my grandmother, he certainly understands stubbornness. So I think that's a really strong point of providing our own service in our own community is that, is that ability to provide our residents to stay in Woolwich as long as they as long as they safely can do so. I'll certainly answer any questions. We, if you look at the line by line, I cut and I trimmed. I took a cell phone bill and said, okay, the cell phone bill is this much. Multiply that by 12. I tried to be as meticulous as possible to make as many cuts as possible so that the payroll amounts weren't as high as they could be. You know, and we're trying to bare-bone as much as possible out of respect for taxpayers. I am a taxpayer. I truly understand that. Nervous about the rebound, how that's going to affect my taxes and my family. And I wouldn't stand up here as the EMS director and push this and push our option as the one if I didn't think it would work because everyone here knows I have family in this town. I'm not, I'm not going to put forth an option that I don't think is beneficial. That would be, I don't know, it would be highly hypocritical of me to do that. Hopefully, that covers everything.
I'd like to have you know.
Questions for, yes, I recognize you. Yes, yes. Runner, let's get the microphone. Oh, she's going to use it. Okay, fine, thank you.
Glad I made it up here without falling. Question about the warrant's mention of the revenue potential. What was the revenue this year? Is there anything to compare this 97.5 to?
Absolutely. So I can give you, if you look in the fine print, so I'll go two years back because that's the last year that we have the full numbers. We're still finishing this fiscal year up. It's just over $92,000. This year, as of about 11 o'clock this morning, when I last checked with the billing company, we're at $82,000 this year. We, the last four years, we've only estimated $70,000, so. But we're comfortable moving forward with that $97,000 amount because that's around where we're at usually. Now that we've stuck with one billing company, we have changed billing companies. I've changed things for a year, lowered things a little bit while they got the swing of things. But as I said, we're at $82,000 so far this year and that continues the rest of May and I'll do.
Question here. Runner, please, up here.
Okay. Got it. Okay. I was recently transported by ambulance to Midcoast Hospital. And I got a bill in the mail from an organization that is out of state. I was quite shocked. And I thought, how much of a percentage is that out-of-state company getting whenever we have to pay that organization or we have to send them all our information and then they bill for Woolwich? And that, that was kind of crazy to me. Why can't Woolwich bill their own ambulance run and get all the revenue?
Mr. Carlton? There is a significant amount of training and administrative costs doing our own billing. We have used, up until three years ago, we used a company out of Winterport called TG Higgins. They closed. We reached out to other billing companies in the state. We reached out to the billing company that does billing for the city of Bath because Bath Fire and Rescue does use another entity to do their ambulance billing. And they said they were too busy to take us on. At the recommendation of our former billing company, they recommended a company, Ambulance Medical Billing. Their headquarters are in Paducah, Kentucky. They do have a local representative out of Boston who, I could text him right now if I needed to. And they honored the rate that TG Higgins was using. It's 7%. And that's the same rate that TG Higgins was using. And they honored that one.
You in blue, yes, ma'am. You had a question? No, you, yeah.
Hope Lavender. I, in the social media information, I believe that I noticed that if we were to choose to go with the Bath EMS rather than have our own, that if all the ambulances in Bath were out, that they would call ambulances from Brunswick and Topson, which would make the response time to us much longer than if, of course, if we have our own or if they were just coming from Bath. Is that correct?
Mr. King?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Other people, Ted?
Mr. Carlton, do you have intentions to remain as EMS director?
I've submitted my letter of resignation and I will not be commenting any further on that.
Other question, yes, in the back. Wait, yes, runner? Let's get the runner to you.
I don't need that. You can give it to me, but I'm not going to use it. So I got a, I got a bunch of questions, actually.
Use the mic, please.
I don't need the mic.
I know. We need to hear it.
All right, so I have a bunch of questions. Can you hear me?
Yes, hear you.
All right, thank you. So, just heard that if we had response from Bath, if we go with them, that their ambulances might be out of Topson. What if our ambulance is in Fort Kent or Boston doing a transport? Where is our ambulance going to come from?
Question, Mr. Carlton?
When doing transfers outside of the area, we have never done that in left-of-town uncovered. We've always brought in extra crews to cover those. If both trucks are unavailable in the town of Woolwich, our mutually partner is Wiscasset. If Wiscasset's unavailable, it's Bath.
Okay, so, folks, our ambulance is going out of town. It's going to Fort Kent. Was that what we decided to do with our ambulance service? Doing transfers, Mr. Carlton?
We've been to Fort Kent once in four years. And that was for a town resident that was not, that was not a resident of another municipality. That was a resident of Woolwich that needed to get transported to Fort Kent. So that, as we, we will bend over backwards to transport resident of Woolwich. And communities need to get patients out of hospitals. So we've helped out in doing that. We also, from November to April, participated with Midcoast Hospital's community transfer truck where we staffed a second ambulance. And by doing so, Midcoast Hospital paid us $1,250 per day to do that for that 12-hour period. And we also are able to collect any billing revenue from that. For anyone that's been to Midcoast Hospital in the last year, maybe even a little longer than that, hallway beds, if you're lucky. If you're not lucky to get a hallway bed, you're out in the waiting room. We have transported residents of Woolwich and not been able to put them into a bed at Midcoast Hospital. We've had to drop them off in the waiting room for a bed to become available. That's if a hospital, if they're even accepting patients at that time.
Firefighters and EMS people, so I'm sure I'm going to get some daggers. But what level of care are we going to get from an ambulance that's being stationed at the station compared to Bath when I know that they're going to respond with an EMT and an advanced almost every time when they come over to Woolwich?
Our current staffing of our 12 providers is four EMT basics, seven advanced EMTs, and one paramedic. We do have a contract with Midcoast Hospital's paramedic interceptor. So if we do not have a paramedic available and we need one, we can use MC-1. And then if we're headed, if they're not available, I know that's probably a next question. If they're not available, we can intercept with Bath or Brunswick, depending on where that decision is made on the way to the hospital.
So honestly, and I do support you guys, trust me, 100%. But there are questions that need to be answered that, you know, you hear through the grumblings of the town. So, especially on Facebook. I hear that some staffs aren't, some shifts aren't being staffed fully.
I gladly open up. If anyone wants to lend me a laptop, I can log into Window, which is our scheduling software and show all of our shifts covered. We've covered every shift in the, we've covered all of our shifts. We've covered every single ambulance call. We've even had multiple calls going on at separate ti, or at the same time and provided both Woolwich ambulances to the separate calls with Woolwich staff onboarding.
Chairman of the front, yes?
Mr. Montheray, my name is Ron Lavender. Just a quick question in regard to the proposed budget. In view of the fact that Mr. Carlton has submitted his resignation, I noted that the EMS director stipend was reduced from the 2022 amount of $10,000 to $5,000. What is the expectation of the select board in regard to being able to hire a new EMS director with a stipend that is half of what it currently is?
Mr. King?
I would say that it's going to be more difficult.
And so in view of that, why is this, why is it reduced?
I was the one that reduced it, so. Mr. Thomas?
So I reduced that. And it's because of the change in operation that we're moving towards. So those per DM staff can take on some of the administrative tasks. So that was going to reduce my roles and responsibilities with the department, which is why I cut that stipend down. So that, that's the reason for that. So I can have staff do truck checks. I can have them do maintenance work. They can take care of some of the paperwork while they're, they're not just going to sit at the station and collect their hourly wage for 12 hours and do nothing. They're going to have tasks and chores to do. Sorry, guys, if you weren't aware. But, you know, they're going to have stuff to do. And that's why, to be completely honest with the town, that should be a full-time position. The amount of work that goes into running this service. Even in my current role, it's about 20 hours a week with just my own administrative stuff. I have three assistant directors that help me out covering it. So the, instead of adding in full-time administrative or increasing administrative costs, that's part of the per DM staff to cover all the administrative needs.
Mr. Davis, do you want to respond?
Well, a part of the idea is that the, since we now have fully-paid shifts, the director can also take one or two of those shifts per month and earn the equivalent of what would otherwise be part of that $10,000 stipend.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make one more statement for Woolwich. I worked 40 hours, 40 years of critical care my whole life. And everything is critical. When an ambulance is called out, we want the criticalness of that ambulance to get to a Woolwich resident now. Not wait for Bath or United or Wiscasset to show up. I am for Woolwich because of the criticalness of ambulance calls. We need Woolwich.
Everybody hear that all right? Okay. Okay, any other discussion?
Yep.
Yes, back here. Oops, the microphone?
So Mark Anderson, I live right across the street. I usually only attend town meetings to check if my name's on page 50. Mike, we're not, so we're a bit. Question for Mr. King. Can you give us an idea of what the town's liability is if an EMS worker gets hurt on the job for Woolwich versus somebody who is responding from Bath Fire Department?
Mr. King?
Our current workman's comp is up to, normal is considered a one and we are up to 1.65 now. We've paid 0.65 more for our workman's comp than we would have normally.
Do we incur a cost if Bath Fire Department is covering and they get hurt, covered in account?
The answer is no. Yes, Mr. King, no?
I'd like to just take a couple of minutes. As you all know, I'm known for being rather frugal. And in 2019, when we got into doing this on our own, we were told that we would no longer see large increases in our budget. We would only see cost of living. From year one to year two, cost of living should have been $6,180. The increase was $25,000. From year two to year three, the cost of living should have been $6,374 and the cost, the actual increase was $58,000 last year. And now we're looking at a $71,000 increase. Handwriting is on the wall, ladies and gentlemen. At some point, we've got to regionalize this service. We can do it for a couple more years. But if we keep going between $50,000 and $70,000 increase every year, we've got to face the fact that we're a small bedroom community and we can't afford to keep doing it. We don't haul our own rubbish because we can't afford to do it. We don't have a public works department because we can't afford a public works department. We pay out, on average, and I've got several payroll sheets here that I just picked randomly. And I'll pass them around if everybody wants to see them. We pay out every two weeks about $5,500 for on-call pay. And we average about $1,500 for the actual hours that people are in an ambulance working, okay? I keep, the one thing that worries me more than the money here is the word "might," okay? We're talking about putting full-time people in the, in the building five days a week. And we've heard that we might have a guy from Boothbay that might come up and cover a couple shifts. We have a guy from Yarmouth that might come over and cover a couple shifts. At one time, we were told there was two Bowdoin College kids that might stay here for the summer and they might cover some shifts. If I'm laying in my driveway asking for air, I'd like to know that somebody's going to show up, that somebody's going to, might show up. I, I hope this works. I hope what they've put together will work. I hope that we can afford to do it for a couple more years. And I will respect whatever decision the people in this room make because I've always said, the people in Woolwich make the correct decision.
Mr. Hope? Yes?
This seems like a major expense, a major decision.
Who else? All right.
This seems like a major expense and a major decision that's important for all of us. And I don't feel qualified to make a good decision. Oftentimes, we look to you, Mr. King, and to your other select people to lead us in the right direction. And that's what I'm looking for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Hambly?
I did not ask Ted to, ask that question. But, and this is a comment, right? Given what's happening elsewhere across the state, we are in a crisis, EMS crisis. We also only have to look at Bowdoin Ham to see what's happening there. In my opinion, we are very lucky to have this crew here with us.
All right, let's get the rest of the board before I give them a minute. Mr. Davis?
Well, I think the Woolwich EMS department has been fantastic for the last four years that they've been doing it. And I think it would be a real loss to the town and to the greater community if we didn't continue it. And since it is still cheaper than Bath, we should do it, I think.
Mr. Chandler?
I've had occasions to need Woolwich ambulances, I think twice in the last year. They've been professional, they've been timely. I wouldn't hesitate to call them again. And I think we have an investment in our own ambulance service and I'd like to keep it going.
Mr. Shaw?
I guess what I'd say is, we were faced in the beginning of this with potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in increases. And that's why these options are here. And, you know, as you've heard Tommy and Brian and Sean that have worked through it, we had a large increase last year, a large incre- We had a large increase last year, a large increase this year. There's no question they've done a wonderful job. I guess the factor is, you know, we're hopeful that maybe next year, this, you know, if we keep going, Woolwich, it flattens off some. There's no assurances in this whole thing, I think we all know that. If we were faced with some large increase next year, then obviously these scales could tip the other way. It's hopeful that it, that it doesn't happen. Brian and the board have had many, many discussions and conversations, and, you know, there's never a guarantee of what you'll get. Immediately, we were down some on personnel, Brian, right, from the, from the beginning. Nobody can figure that out. Bath may have its own problems, and that's what we're here about. But, you know, I guess it would be hopeful that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing this type of talking about this if there'd been a 20% increase, or a 10% increase, or some increase in the beginning of the process. The board felt that it was due diligence to get some options for you folks, but now we're back to what I would say is a respectable number, and I don't know, see what happens.
Mr. King?
I think you all, I, I think we can afford to do it one more year. If we come in next year with another $70,000 increase or a $55,000 increase, I think we really have to take a look and see if we want to regionalize the service. The head of the EMS department for the state of Maine and the head of the EMS Association for the state of Maine have both gone on record as saying, if you're not doing 1,500 to 2,000 calls a year, you need to look at something else. We did, the last full calendar year, according to the EMS department of Maine, we did 275 emergency calls. That's less than one per day. We're running a service to get, and again, the people doing it have done a wonderful job, and I applaud them, and they've, they've worked, their tails off to make it work, and that's great. But it boils down to that we're running a service that can probably do 1,000 calls a year, and we're, we're doing it, we're going 275 calls. So the cost per call is, is, you know, extraordinary, and it, I applaud what they've done. They've done a great job. I hope, I, you know, and again, whatever decision you folks make is the right decision. But we have to look, I read somewhere recently that where there's over, there's a shortage of over 1,500 EMS people in the state of Maine, what's needed. So everybody is trying to poach employees from every other service, and we're going to be relying on per diem people, people that have worked a shift in Yarmouth or a shift in Booth Bay or wherever, to come up here on their day off and work. And I hope it works. That's all I can say. And Brian is, Brian has done, he's done a great job of keeping this leaking boat floating as long as he has.
Mr. Longley?
Mr. Moderator, being the only EMT that was here when Bath was our service provider before, I move the question!
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to move the question. That's not debatable. That means we immediately put the vote for whether you want to vote now or you want to continue discussion. If you want to vote now, this is a very important issue, then you'll vote no. If you want to continue now and vote on the article, and we need to clarify which article we're voting on.
We're voting on Article A.
The motion I thought was for both articles.
I would, I would.
We'll clarify that.
I will clarify.
I'll clarify that I misspoke. I should have just moved Article A, so I will now move Article 40A.
Consider Article A on the floor. Mr. Longley has moved the question. If you're ready to vote, you'll vote yes on this motion. If you wish to continue discussion, you'll vote no. It requires two-thirds to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The question is moved. Question before us is 40A. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $360,844 for the Emergency Medical Service Department. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 40A is adopted.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we delete Article 40B.
Moved and seconded to dispense with Article 40B.
Mr. Moderator, just a quick recruitment piece. We were just informed today that there'll be an EMT class in Wiscassit this summer, free for anyone that's interested. We'll get some information out on social media for it. If, I could have thrown in one more comment, is that we are still actively recruiting for more staff.
Thank you, Mr. Harland. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, so Brian, the select board accepted your resignation with regret at the last meeting, and we would like to formally recognize you for your outstanding service and commitment and hard work with, with the EMS and what you've done for the town.
Thank you. The motion before us is to dispense with Article 40B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. Article 40B is dispensed. Article 40C, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,110 for interest payments on the fourth year of the ambulance. Two, to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,429 for principal payments for the fourth year of the ambulance.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 46, 40C as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. Article 40C is adopted. Article 40D, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to use any amount of income generated by rescue services to reduce the budget as they deem appropriate.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 40D as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. Article 40D is adopted. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $400 for the snowmobile registration reimbursement for the McQuasit Trailmaker's snowmobile fund. 2022 appropriation was $400.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Seconded motion? Moved and seconded to accept Article 41 as read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. Article 41 is adopted. Article 42, to see what sum of money the town will vote to donate to the following local agencies. Bath, Area YMCA, Family Life.
Mr. Longley?
Mr. Longley?
I want to make a motion to dispense with the analysis of the reading of each line item.
Thank you, Mr. Longley. Moved and seconded to waive further reading of this article. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. May I have a motion on Article 42?
Move the article to be accepted as read. Seconded motion?
Motion is to accept Article 42 as presented. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Ron Lavender, Mr. Moderator. In regard to this article, it seems that many towns in Maine are facing the fact that budgets are very difficult to fund, and you look at this article and you recognize that what the town is doing here is we are providing, in some cases, token amounts to these organizations. They are all very likely very good organizations. However, the taxpayers' money in Woolwich really should not be used to fund charitable organizations. That's unto individuals to make decisions about giving to charitable organizations, because I'm sure some of you like every one of these organizations. However, some of you may say, well, I really don't understand what this organization does and how they benefit all the people of Woolwich, Maine. So my suggestion is that we look very hard at how we use the taxpayers' money, and that we consider things like how much it costs to fund EMS, and that we put those dollars for use for the people of Woolwich. And then if individuals want to give to charitable organizations, they can do that, and they can even get a tax deduction for it. So you can tell me if I'm out of order, Mr. Moderator. I would like to move that we amend this, this article to delete all items in Article 42, with the exception of Woolwich Historical Society for the amount of $1,500, and that the total of this article be reduced to $1,500.
Is there a second? Let's see, a second. Moved and seconded to amend Article 42 to remove 5,000, to remove all the 5,000.
1,500.
1,500, all the 1,500 dollars. Any discussion on the amendment? Yes, ma'am.
Does that include like the food bank in Bath? That's all the Woolwich goes to? If they wanted to go to the food bank or?
The motion is to remove everything except the Woolwich Historical Society, $1,500.
My name's C.R. Davis. I live off Rutherford, North Coast Road. The town of Woolwich has a process by which, and I think the select can speak to that, the letters are written in good faith to the town and explain each one of the details of how they benefit the community. I was not prepared for this. I'm a volunteer at the YMCA. I know we have data by the number of scholarships that we provide for youth, for help, for childcare, various, we gave out over $220,000 last year in scholarships and subsidies to community members. A portion of that is for Woolwich. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I can provide a letter later. I don't support that we do this tonight. I support that we do not reduce it to $1,500, so I vote against that. If, if there's movement by the community to have each organization present facts and figures, the letters are with the, with the selectmen now, so I'll let them speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Again, I'm known to be a very frugal, but I have to say that we, we, several years ago, we froze most of these, these donations, and the only time that we give anybody a, an increase of any kind is if we know the town is getting back more than we're giving. Oh, I, I would hope that we stay with the $20,391.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir, will you give a back?
Jeff, appear again.
Loud.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for talking to local YMCA, because that was a question that I had, was the $500. I do not need my phone.
All right.
So, the $500, if we're going to donate to the YMCA, why can't we buy a membership card for our firefighters and our EMTs so we can actually get something back, like having healthy firefighters and EMTs that don't have heart attacks on scenes? Because that has happened, folks. You've actually had a firefighter die that got brought back three times on the way to the hospital. So why can't we take that $500 and put it towards something to give back to our firefighters and EMTs?
Thank, yes, can't you?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, going down. Just give the microphone to, here's the mic, please. So as I go down through these, many of these are for Woolwich residents. I mean, as an example, the Old Building Program is for students here at Woolwich Central School. So I think that, in fact, many of these, since I look through them lifelike, I assume that's the, that goes towards Woolwich. So I encourage us to not approve the amendment.
Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. King? We need the microphone over here, please.
I see we give Bath Senior Center $850, but if you became a member, you'd get $5 off. You're only charged $15 per year instead of 20, and I teach exercise class three times a week, so after all the money we just spent, I think we probably could afford $850 for the Senior Center.
Any other discussion? The amendment before us. Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, ma'am? Up here at the front?
Hi, I'm the N.C. Hemingway, Anamoraphis, Colorado. I grew up there and have returned the last couple of years, and this is my first adult participation in the activities of Woolwich. I think the thing to consider is Bath Area Food Bank, Food Bank, we don't know which people in Woolwich benefit from that. And just because you don't need it, doesn't mean there isn't someone here in Woolwich who does. Big brothers, big sisters, you don't know which children in this town benefit from that, who need somebody to support them and their family. The dental clinic, maybe most of us here can afford dentistry. So I think, look at these things, and what little we may be able to contribute, may not make a huge difference, but at least shows that this community is looking to support all of the members of the community, no matter what their ability to care for themselves is or to participate. So I think that we should just accept 42 as these, and no question in further. Thank you.
All right, the amendment before us is to reduce all of the agencies except the Woolwich Historical Society. I'll call for a motion. If you're, you're like the amendment, you'll vote yes. If you don't, then want all of the articles to vote no. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no.
No!
The amendment fails adoption. The article before us, Article 42, is to raise and appropriate, is to donate $20,391 to the agencies listed therein. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 42 is adopted. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,391 for donations to the local agency organizations. That's what you just did above. This is raising and appropriating. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Motion on it, Chris.
Oh, excuse me, I need a motion.
Motion that Article 43 is accepted as read.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept Article 43. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 43 is adopted. Article 44, pardon, pardon, ordinance, to see if the town will vote to raise the current transport rates for mileage costs from $16 to $17 due to the increase in fuel costs. Transportation rates, the following rates will be charged for transports.
Mr. Longley?
Yes, Mr. Longley?
Waive the reading of each and every line item from now to this question. I second that.
Moved and seconded to waive further reading of the nine items in this article. Any motion? On Article 44.
Move the Article 44 as read.
Seconded.
Moved to accept Article, moved to accept Article 44 as presented. Colton, you have something to say?
I just want to talk to the reasons for this, and before I get there, it's been an honor to serve in this position, but I'm just the guy that does the behind-the-scenes work, family life and such. I do like one or two shows a month. It's, those people back there that have made this work, they've made me look smart over the last four years, so those guys deserve the standing ovation with me. So those guys deserve the standing ovation with me. So these changes to the billing rates are at the recommendation of our billing company. They haven't been updated in four years since we took over, except for mileage. Mileage is, we've kept mileage up to date. The others haven't changed, so we're updating those at their recommendation. And I pulled up our last report, which was from the last day of April. So our average billing for, and this is for billable calls, transports, our average bill outdoor is seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, and our average income based on the calls is four-hundred dollars, four-hundred-and-one dollars and change. So basically, insurance companies, Medicare, Medicare, and now private insurance companies are going to adjust that. And we have to accept that adjustment. So that increase will help out with those adjustments a little bit. Where this will hurt, to be completely transparent, is people that don't have health insurance will be given a full bill. And I just remind those, the select board may not appreciate this reminder, but there is a portion in the billing board that the citizens pass that allows for citizens to approach the board if there's any hardship. So if a taxpayer doesn't have health insurance and has a full bill coming, then they can reach out to the select board for assistance with that. Certainly answering any other questions. Ambulance billing is a science and is exactly why we have some of those who are aware of it, but I'll try to answer any other questions.
Any discussion, questions? Motion is to accept Article forty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article forty-four is adopted. Article forty-five, so an ordinance entitled Town of Woolwich Solar Energy Systems Ordinance being enacted for the town of Woolwich. The town of Woolwich Solar Energy Systems Ordinance. One, titled authority, purpose, and haptic ability. Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Moderator. How many pages is that?
A lot.
I'm required to read this unless you help me. I'd like to move that you not read the whole thing unless you just vote on it.
I second. I second that motion.
Moved and seconded to wait for the reading of the solar ordinance, which is several pages here. I'm not going to ask for discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Do you have a motion before us? We need a motion.
I've moved that Article forty-five be accepted.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded that Article forty-five be accepted as presented. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Hope.
Was the select board involved in the drafting of this, or where did it come about?
We had a committee that drafted the ordinance.
That is by.
Okay. I want to, the, I guess, one of the more important provisions, it talks about siting. And it says, "The town of Woolwich encourages siting of solar panels," and then it goes on to list some of the considerations. All it says is it encourages rather than it requires. Is there a reason for it being so weak in that regard? This is on page five. And I'm thinking of, in particular, what we commonly call solar farms. It seems like a solar farm could be put just about anywhere, even if it was in a very scenic spot. Well, I, Paul, if you want to come up here.
Yeah, I'm.
Some of the members of the committee that brought the ordinance are here, but I mean, that issue in particular, the ordinance, that was, that was a big subject of conversation in the committee, is to basically make it so that the solar farm, the solar installations were basically invisible. So there's, there's significant setback requirements. There's a requirement that it not be visible from any roadway, from any residence or place that could be a residence, or from any waterway. So those, the committee, I believe, Paul, do you want to, you want to speak to this?
I'll scan the microphone to you, please.
Please, the microphone, I think in, in terms of the sitting, the, that together with, well, to answer your question directly about why it's encouraged and not prohibited, I think the committee and the lawyer felt that it would be very difficult to make, to make specific forcible limitations, and that it would be more to the site plan review process and to the planning board review process. I, I missed then the requirements that it not be visible from roadways. Where is that? In four-point-nine, buffers and screening from waterways, roads, and residences by planning firms naturally talk about features, so. Good, thank you. Paul, do you have anything you want to add? I think you answered that.
There we go. No, I, I would like to take a second and thank Tom for all the work you put into this. I mean, Tom really spearheaded this and did all the coordinating and made all the arrangements, but thank you.
All right. Dr. Nash here now.
Yes, Tom Stoner. This ordinance seems to be suitable for a regional impact as far as commercial and industrial applications. But as far as residential applications, I think it's a little bit oversight in terms of controls and the requirements necessary for a resident to meet these requirements. So in that respect, I would like to move that this particular ordinance be withdrawn, actually, because it does not apply to residences unless we want regional control. In other words, if anyone wants to put a solar panel system on their property, they would not be able to do it by this without going through a lot of requirements that would typically be a commercial or industrial application. So we need to think about that.
That's, that's not actually correct. The residential requirements are only that you have a building permit from the CEO. So there's no, the limitations about the screening and the setbacks and all that doesn't apply for putting solar panels on the roof of your house.
I think that could be interpreted differently. Is the CEO a registered solar electrician?
Well, the CEO is not a special, specialist in solar stuff. Paul, what do you want to say?
Yeah, we, we talked about this a lot. If you're going to put solar panels on your roof, you're going to hook to CMP, there's all kinds of hoops you're going to run through for CMP. We didn't feel that it was appropriate for the town to step in and decide what you should and shouldn't do with your home. I live off-grid in a total solar house. All I had to give was a permit, and that's what we felt it should be for your local, your particular house. Now, if you're going to put a commercial establishment industrial, we thought that needed to be regulated.
So I think the wording in this document needs to change to some degree to indicate that better. I don't know if there was a public hearing on this when it was written up.
Yes, there was last week.
If there was, I missed it because I'm out of town.
That wording was, was from the attorney. She, she worked on the wording. We basically gave her the idea as well. She came up with a legal charging.
I'm not sure how many you had in attendance at that, but it seems to be a short notice, maybe, I don't know. But anyway, I think the wording is not appropriate for residential property. Have someone make a motion to that effect.
Is there a second to that motion? Moved and seconded, well, let me clarify. The motion on this article now is to accept it. If you vote no, you're not accepting it.
That's right.
Your motion is just the reverse. Do you really feel you need your motion to not accept this? And the motion on the floor now is to accept Article, accept this article. Forty-five.
Okay, then I'd move to amend this article to be changed to address residential properties differently. And if that means to vote no.
You cannot amend an ordinance. We have to take it as it is or not.
Okay, then I, I recommend that I'm not vote.
So you would urge people to vote no?
That is correct.
Mr. King.
Tom, if this was, this was brought about, there are several large, very large tracts of land up off the old Hedge Bridge Road, and this, the people up there that own those large tracts of land approached the town to see what they needed to do to put in solar farms up there. And trust me, you're not going to see them from your house. And so this committee worked very diligently to put this together, and it does not pertain to solar panels on the roof of your house. It's basically written to protect the town if they put large tracts of solar panels up there. One thing it does is it requires them to have access. The shame of it is, most of those large tracts of land up there are landlocked.
So I guess I will accept the fact that you will stand by that on record, that it will not apply to residential properties.
Yeah, real quick.
Mrs. Havel?
Tom, I shared that, I shared that question myself when I read through this, right? Because it, and for me at least, even though it defines on the first page residential, commercial, industrial, as you move through there, it talks about the industrial and commercial things, it still refers to it as an SES, which I was confused about. I don't know if that was your concern, but that was my concern, and so I'm glad you raised that.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, so Tommy, I discussed this as more than, we reached out to the town attorney. We have their written legal opinion that it does not apply to residential solar panels that are attached to your roof or on your home. Do you concur with that, Tommy? And so we wondered if this would come up in clarification. I think, Tom, you were in the public hearing, and you had some questions in regards to...
Yeah, I want to speak.
Okay. So what we had, what we're happy to share with you is, yeah, it does not apply to those.
Okay, just want to clarify that you go on record that that applies. I'm just concerned that a good lawyer would take the legal, legalities to this and apply appropriate penalties even to residences.
Well, I would like to think that, that's right, this meeting is a public meeting, it's recorded, and what the record reflects that you've stated that, I guess.
Mr. McPhee?
Tom McPhee, once we wrote, it was a public hearing, I was the only public person there. I had a few questions about residential, commercial, and size limits, mostly minimum size limits. And they, they called Chris Wilthox, emailed him, whatever, and gave me an answer and said, you believe the key words are residential and commercial, solar use, residential implies rooftop or ground-mounted panels, generating usable electricity at the home. My problem was, does this include a solar light? And he says, "That small utilities for uphill lighting such as that would not block." But the problem is, on the definitions that are exactly the same as they were when they were submitted, it lists what a solar, solar energy system is. So it starts out with a photo, a solar, a cell, comma. A cell is a half-volt. So if all I had was a cell, I'm in that zone. It takes four cells to make, makes a solar light. I think the whole definition is wrong on what a SES is, is the problem with this ordinance. The next one was portable, portable equipment that can be moved from point to point. And the code enforcement officer's answer was, "A situation that I had would not apply because the key word is portable." But portable is nowhere's in the ordinance, is the problem. So the lawyer that sort of looked this over should have looked for definitions of what they were talking about, so at least it made a little sense. And most every other SES in the whole state has a size, whether it's kilowatts or whether it's square footage. And we have nothing, it leaves it, leaves it wide open for some interpretation at later
So I did talk to the lawyer about your specific questions, Mr. McPhee, the example of the small portable devices and the device such as a solar-powered front door, or a porch light, or a path light. She's, she says she's clearly, it's clear that the ordinance is not intended to apply, to apply, to apply to those devices. So I think, I think she's pretty comfortable that the ordinance covers your examples.
Yes.
Just, just a further note on this, with a little bit of knowledge from what's happening in Colorado, any ordinance that is applied and accepted can be interpreted as is. And the way this ordinance reads now with the ambiguities, what happens in, what has happened in Colorado is that ordinances are being invoked and enforced by CEOs at a thousand dollars per day penalty. And no one has recourse because that's the ordinance that's been approved, just for your record.
Mr. Wong?
If she says it's in there, it should be in the ordinance, plain. You shouldn't have to look all over the place for the answer. And do you have any idea what category net metering might be in?
Mr. Davis?
I can speculate that net metering is not industrial, because the definition of industrial, I believe, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, has to do with the purpose of it being solely to supply power to the grid, not to supply power or power to a business or a home. And then, and as, sort of as a side effect, tied to the grid and make a little money off of that as well.
What would the fee be for a residential person that is selling his power to a CMP? Because they don't, they have a maximum power. They don't have a minimum.
The fee, or I'm not sure, I don't understand the question.
Well, you have residential fee, commercial fee, and our residential.
So the fee for a residential solar installation is just building.
So with a net metering one, it's actually selling the power to a CMP.
If it's residential, it would.
Then it's residential, but it's actually competitive. The definition doesn't give you that, because you are selling it, you're not using it.
If you're only selling it, that's not, that's commercial.
Right, so net metering would require a thousand dollars.
Or a permit?
No, no.
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 Well, trying to figure out your order.
That's a commercial, it's a commercial, yeah.
Mr. Longway?
If it's on your residence and you're using it, then that's, that's normal.
As I said before, you know, we don't want to dictate what you can do with your house. Stay away from that.
Mr. Longway asks more.
A question was asked earlier is, how is the code officer going to inspect if they're not solar certified? The code officer doesn't inspect to the solar certification, they inspect to the state of Maine required building codes. And it's the building code that the CEO does his inspection to. I don't remember again.
I could, I could.
Yes?
About a little bit.
Bill, the, any of these things, whether they're commercial, industrial, it's going to have to go through a state process, you know, as where the DEP's going to have permits, the PUC is going to have requirements, CMP's going to have requirements. We tried to just look at just the citing. We felt that that was our thing, was really, you know, the citing requirements really is what's the town's issue. Whether they can hook up to CMP, we said, yeah, you have to show us that you can. But we can't get into weeds about whether or not they pay the CMT or free back.
Mr. Longway? I'd like to move the question. What did you say, Mr. Long? I'd like to move the question. Okay.
It's just how, how we speak.
Sorry, I didn't see you. The question has been moved, is not debatable. If you do not wish to move the question or wish to continue discussing, you may vote no. Otherwise, if you wish to move the question and immediately vote on the ordinance, you'll vote yes. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. The question is moved. Motion before us on Article forty-four, or forty-five, is so an ordinance entitled Town of Woolwich. Motion before us, Article forty-four, forty-five, is selling ordinance entitled Town of Woolwich Solar Energy Systems Ordinance being enacted for the Town of Woolwich. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Let's have a show of hands. You got those white cards? All those in favor, please hold those cards up for counting. This is the vote to pass the ordinance. All those in favor of passing the ordinance, hold them high for counting. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold your power high for counting. Thank you. Fifty-nine have been voted in the affirmative and twenty-seven in the negative. Article forty-four is adopted. Forty-five is adopted. Now, there is an addendum to the town meeting. I don't know whether you have a copy of this addendum. It is filed on May seventeenth. It's in Article forty-six, one more article. Passed out when you came in. It's not long, I'll read it. Article forty-six, selling the ordinance entitled The Closet Park Ordinance be amended as follows. Article seven, use of public recreational area. It's crossing out all other activities within the public recreational area, except those receiving specific approval by the Board of Selectmen, are permitted only between April first and December thirty-first, between nine a.m. and nine p.m. That is crossed out. Otherwise, the ordinance makes the same? No. Well, there's stuff on the back. And also, crossed out from the existing ordinance is number five, children under the age of twelve must be accompanied by someone who is at least eighteen years of age. And added is in number four, the select board made by order passed rules and regulations regarding use of the public recreational area as needed to promote safe and responsible use of the area. Is that clear? In the ordinance, it says the Town of Woolwich Recreation Committee shall have overall responsibility for the administration of the public recreation area, except as otherwise provided by the ordinance.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second motion. Moved and seconded to accept Article forty-six as read. Any discussion? Mr. King?
We found going through this that we couldn't, we want to put up a new sign down there. The old sign is kind of rough shape, and we want to make some changes to it. And we found that with the language of the existing ordinance, we couldn't, for example, a couple of years ago, I put up a sign down there saying, "No fireworks allowed." We didn't have the authority to put that sign up. But with these minor changes, it gives us better control over the, over the area, that's all.
All right. Any questions? All those in favor accepting Article forty-six as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article forty-six is adopted. Mr. Shaw would like to make a comment?
So just back to the solar ordinance real quick. Allison and Tommy have indicated that they understand the clarifications that need to be made, and they're willing to work on that and bring it back with some changes for next year, right? That's what we agreed, so. Yeah, yeah, and the scrutiny and concern was good. And anyway, so those folks that are in doubt, that will work on it.
All right, I want to thank Cole Eaton and Lou Lukey for their being a runner tonight. And I'd like to say that this is my last town meeting. I first started the town meeting in nineteen eighty-two. That's a long time ago. And except for three years when I was away, last year Ted Ove took over, appreciate that.